Salute to the flag. Let our old call of members.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Southwood.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
This time I've entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Do a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have one question. We appointed one person for training on grant writing. I thought we had done two.
Two. And we're looking to get another date. She's still got to get back to me from that.
Okay, I just wasn't clear. And that's on the... I was sure because I was available for last month's meeting.
New business, number one.
It says approval to pay for grant writing class for Joanne Favreau. The mayor's suggestion is to also send someone from the village. The motion is made by Trustee Garrett, seconded by Trustee Trombley and Gary. So we don't know who that person is.
Yes, right now I'm a date conflict with my son's graduation.
Are there any other questions on the minutes? Now, all in favor of accepting the minutes of the previous meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All ayes have it. This time I have a presentation of petitions, communications, notices, or a general question period for members of the community. I'd like to read our guidelines for public comment for those who do not know them. The public shall be allowed to speak only during the public comment period of the meeting, or at such time as the majority of the board shall allow. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization if any. Board members may, with permission of the mayor, interrupt the speaker during their remarks, but only for the purpose of clarification of information. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not any member of their own. Speakers shall observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties and their representatives may address the board by written communications also. You would ask that everybody keep their comments to five minutes or less. Okay, is there any comments?
My name is Andrew Clark, Champlain, New York. I was talking to a group about going to a skate park in Champlain.
They'll find all that, sit next to them, so they'll have some support here.
That's fine.
Andrew, I checked into the liability to confirm that today. If we are able to find a grant that will fund a skate park 100 percent, there is absolutely no liability on the village, so there is no increase into our insurance. However, if we pay for any portion of a skate park out of funds that are publicly funded here, our liability assurance goes, like, through the roof. So we have got a woman, Joanne Favreau, and hopefully myself, who are going to grant writing course coming up, and our goal is to find some grants to add this in, okay? We will be having the riverfront park going in, coming up. There's not a skateboard park there, but ultimately the goal is to get to this. If we can not add the liability, and your dad can probably explain to you the liability and what that is, but it's insurance. So if someone were to get hurt and they were to come after the village to sue us, that's what the liability is all about. But we are hoping to be able to fund it 100 percent and then we won't have that additional charge. But our goal is definitely to try and focus on stuff like this to get into the village.
One thing I might recommend is you go to a meeting of the recreation part of... What was that, what do you call your committee called?
Our beautification, yes.
The beautification committee was looking into these things with parks and all that, and that would be a good place to start. You can get in touch with Amy Gary and find out when the next meeting is. You might want to present that, see if you can get some allies there.
Andrew, give me your phone number, because our next meeting is going to be to finalize a vote launch, but then the one after that will put you into the agenda.
All right.
We'll do that. And we'll use all the help.
As you're saying, is that a standard thing if a village or a municipality gets something through a grant, is then automatically...
As long as you, with our insurance company that we currently have right now, as long as it's funded 100 percent as a grant, no source of money coming from us. Like the ice rink was totally donated. We had donations from the community. We'd get donations from the community, whatever. So if we find a grant where they pay 50 percent and we have to fund 50 percent, we can do that through in-kind services, which means you volunteer, you do the work, you help put it together, we match the funds, we do a fundraiser. So there's lots of ways for us to do that, and that's what we're looking to do, is a lot more proactive. We've got a great committee right now, and we're looking for more people to add in.
And then everything is covered as far as the liability issue, so then that just goes out the door.
Correct.
I know you was going to make a comment about there was a skate park in Plattsburgh.
That was donated by someone very wealthy and then also some funds. So if you can find someone that would like to bequest to us a...
One of the things, I mean, any skate parks in different cities around, in different states, and, kind of just head side through here for your own risk, but obviously they must have had the same situation as far as liability as you were stating. But what they all had, or what, and he's researched it also on the internet, and every single one that he's found, except for Plattsburgh, is that they're all open during daylight hours and there's no charge, and it's just part of the park, which to any municipality, a park is for the citizens, is actually an initiative they charge.
We're not looking for a charge.
And I think one of the mistakes, the big mistakes that they made at Plattsburgh was they put a fence around it, limited the hours severely, and were charging people to where it, you know, it could have brought people in, and I think one of the things Andrew was saying is that definitely this could be an asset to Champlain, and there's a time when you're seeing all kinds of growth here, and really in the town of Champlain right now, the excitement is in this village, not, you know, not on the other end over there by the lake or anywhere else. This is the place that's happening, and this is hot.
You got it right. And I'll use all the help, because I need input from you that what is cool, what is hot, what is the happening part of the skateboard, because I certainly would not know that.
Okay, thank you very much for your...
Thank you, Andrew.
Okay, are there any other public comments we made at this time? If not, we'll proceed with the report of Mike Cattrall, Coast enforcement officer.
There's not too much from last time. Had a fairly decent response as far as the cleanup and the letters I sent out. I still have two or three that I've got no response from, and I want to know from the board how you want me to proceed with this. Do we issue the tickets, get them served, send them to court? I believe some of these are probably absentee, or not absentee, but out of village residents, don't live here.
Well, what are our resources at this point? Do we have fines available, or...
Yeah, there's fines available. They can be fined up to $250 a day, per day. I mean, it can add up to quite a bit of money, but you have to get, you've got to get them into court somehow.
Even by fining them, you have to take them to court?
Well, I don't, I don't have the responsibility of setting fines. My only responsibility would be to do the paperwork that would get them to court, but there's a couple of different ways that this is done based on, I mean, I don't know what the procedure here in the village is, I don't know what, you know, the last person did, if you just issued tickets and had them, or had them served to get them to the court, or how you did it. I mean, I need to know this.
Well, maybe we could refer that to Mr. Marshall, and he could come up with a scenario or plan of action for where we go from here, because I have noticed that some of the places you have sent letters to have not responded.
No, and some of them we sent certified return receipt, and they come back yet. You send them first class and they don't come back, so somebody's getting the mail. But these are the issues that, you know, I'm up against.
Okay, well, we definitely want to pursue these further.
Junk in general. The other thing is, I've been in the price shopper quite a bit lately, and they're about to open, I believe, next week. I think that there's an open house is going to be happening and all that. It's very nice in there.
Yeah, we're all looking forward to that.
Other than that, there's still two projects on the industrial park, Strategic Lends. They have to wait for the ground to dry out to get all their infrastructure and the floor. They're working on that. The building itself is, the steel is all up the outside, so they're really progressing. That's going to be a nice building. That's going to be a nice addition to the industrial park. And the main knitting project there, they're just doing their foundation site work, so they'll be erecting steel here shortly. Horizon Heights has started to move some dirt and do some things in there, so hopefully we're going to get some homes in there.
Well, we're hoping that, too.
Other than that, all's quiet.
Very good. Are there any questions?
Mickey, just one quick one. Anything happening in the Tops location? Have they...
I haven't heard anything, no.
Thank you.
That open house is the 15th, and they open on the 16th.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you, Mickey, for your report. Mayor's report. I don't have anything new this month, so proceed with Trustee Trombley's report.
I attended the zoning board meeting last week, and the only item that they had on the agenda was an application for a daycare center on Prospect Street, which the zoning board approved their application, with a few stipulations, such as fencing, because of the traffic that's on that street, but that was approved. And I guess the only other thing is, have you gotten any pricing?
I'm still waiting on the county. I called me today, and they sit down there, so they call me in the morning with the asshole.
So we'll have pricing?
I'll have pricing for three locations, and then we'll decide between the streets and the other one.
So as soon as we get that, you can call me and see, so we can get something set up very wide, because...
We should have a plan, older plans for next year and after.
And just wanted to commend the village crew on a nice job they're doing with the streets, and the village is really starting to shape up for summer. It looks really good.
Are there any questions for Trustee Trombley? Now, we'll proceed to the report of Trustee Martin.
Steve and I went to a couple meetings this past week. We decided to split the resources here, I guess, split the information that we're about to give. Assured services meeting last Thursday, we had the chance to sit down and discuss some issues with Janet Kennedy, who's, she was up here prior to this, and talked about some interesting issues. She asked lots of questions about the river, the passage of the river from the bridge down here in town down to the lake. Was there some developmental process or prospects along the river, and also some issues here in the village about historical events, War of 1812 in specific, specifically. She had lots of questions about the village, the development, housing development, price shopper opening up, some other issues, but I think her main focus on this discussion was, was her enthusiasm, I guess best term, her enthusiasm about how we should explore as a board and as a group, that we should explore the use of the old elementary school, something that, you know, she felt that later on, 10 years down the road, for example, we may regret not considering the adopting of that school, and just some aspects that she had in this. In fact, with Mr. Clark's presentation, the land on her maybe a skate park issue would be something that we could address on the athletic fields here as well. Craig Hicks also attended the meeting, and he was very enthusiastic as well about pursuing some shared resources, shared services with the town of Champlain, and both of us, the village and the town, working together to provide an area for the residents of the town and the village. This is the only playground area that we have for our children. It's an essential location. It's traffic-wise, it would be much safer than having your kids ride their bikes in the summertime, or any time actually, to the parks in Perry's Mills, or the parks in other areas of the town. This would provide a place here in the village for children to congregate with the athletic fields and, you know, the use of these things. A couple people that I talked to about this over the weekend, you know, that would be a perfect place for our skating rink, move it to that area, you know, and better utilize some of the, some of the situation there. One of the town, one of the town persons recommended that, and he had firsthand knowledge of this, was to open up that school for the possibility of governmental offices. He commented on the aspect that he was working in Essex Junction, traveling back and forth every day, you know, with homeland security concerns, and how the school would be a perfect place for training, would be a perfect place for, you know, the computer aspect that he was working on, something that, you know, the school is already prepared for that and already wired for that. You know, just something for us, not only for us as a village, but us as a town entity to explore. Can mention the daycare center, that was mentioned as well. Preschool, use the facility for what it was designed to be. You know, just, I think, just looking, you know, being able to explore some of these issues, because I, you know, I don't know how Steve felt about this, but I know coming away from that meeting, I began to wonder, you know, how we would, as a village feel, five years from now, or six years from now, or ten years from now, if we let that pass us by. It would be a perfect government center for us, but there's always, you know, some fine points to be worked out here, finances and things like that. So when the village constituents watch this videotape, please let us know your concerns. Please let us know how you feel about this situation, and then we can go from there.
Thanks, Greg. Are any questions for Trustee Martin's report?
Greg, the woman you said you met with, what was her name again?
Janet Kennedy from, she was, she spoke to us from Land O' Lakes Byways. She's the director of Land O' Lakes Byways. She came to a shared services meeting in her office, and did a presentation, and she, you know, just followed up, and I'd like to thank her for coming up here and spending some time with us, giving us some direction. Also, I need to mention, thank you, I need to mention that she recommended that we, that we get a hold of SUNY Technical Assistance Organization to do a study, a review, come up with some feasibility plans for the building, you know, cost effectiveness and future uses that we could, that we could have figured out.
SUNY who? SUNY Transit, Technical Assistance.
I agree. Felt the same way.
Are there any other questions for Trustee Martin? Now, we'll proceed with the report of Trustee Southwood.
The other meeting Greg and I attended was a meeting here at the office with Burn Your Car, an engineering firm that we've hired to look at some of the issues that we have with our water system. They gave us some tentative plans and an outline of how they see us moving forward with suggestions or recommendations that they made. I need to make copies for everyone afterwards, but they've got ideas on how we can make the water itself more presentable. There's nothing wrong with our water, it's just that it's iron and magnesium in it. They made some suggestions on how we can rectify that, and also they have a plan for how to address the pressure issues that we have a lot of concerns about in the village as well. The next step is for them to make a final draft of their proposals and give it to us. After that, they would like to sit down with the draft, with the board, in kind of a work session atmosphere, so we can all move through the information that they present to us. They'd like to bring along funding, a representative from the funding, to see that they recommend that we try to pursue, and they also recommend that we write a letter to Senator Little to see if she could send a member of her staff to be a part of the meeting as well. And then finally, after we've done that, we propose that we meet with the health department to see what kind of issues they may have with what we're proposing. This is a safeguard for the direction that we're going. I'm really excited about this, could we finally have a direction for what we need and have some options. Of course, they all cost money, and they're not inexpensive, but this gives us a plan that we need to look at, evaluate, and then decide how to pursue. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Trustee Southwood? Now, we'll proceed with the report of Trustee Gary.
The Beautification Society continues to meet every other week, as a matter of fact, sometimes every week, and that's going to be under New Business, the finalization of the park downtown by the river. That will be completed by June 1st, so we're all very excited about that. Once that's completed, we are going to plan a July, kind of like a come out and meet your neighbor thing, where everybody's going to bring a dish, and we'll all kind of celebrate in the park together and picnic and have a good time, so we're looking forward to that. Our next thing on the agenda with the grant writing is also, you know, the thought of a skateboard park, as Greg, you were saying, with the elementary school. You've asked us to kind of take the lead on that. Jeff, so any ideas people have for renting spaces? We are going to start the list of who we're going to call, and I got a lot of great ideas from you, Greg, of who to call to get in there, to use that space, so it'll help defer some of the costs for us. And obviously, again, with grants, we'll focus on that. If we can make that just an unbelievable community center, that is what our goal and action plan of attack is going to be, because the foundation is there, and with a good, strong foundation, you can do anything. So any more ideas you have of what we can do that can generate some kind of income to sustain taking on this building? Call the village office, give us any information or thoughts that you might have, and we're going to start working on that. So as soon as this village thing is done, the park, so June, we'll be getting to focus on the school and meeting with all the people we need to meet with, getting some facts, and start hitting people as to what we can get in there and how we can do it. The Feral Foundation to help with our cat situation. You'll all get copies of the information. Unfortunately, I just got it in the mail Saturday, so I didn't have time to get it all to you, but they gave us a proposal for starting with getting 40 cats. What they do is they come in and they will live trap these cats so it's safe. They will take them to a vet. They will test them first for feline lupina. If they have feline lupina, they will be put down. If they don't, they will be spayed or neutered. They will be tagged with their ear and let back into the community, so that they're not spreading disease and they're not adding to the population by having too much of a good time. So by doing all this, it'll cut down on the howling and all the other activities. So they need to know at least two areas, maybe it's just one area that we have so many, that is a concentration of excess cats that we need to focus on. It's not cheap anymore. Fuel has added to expenses of it, and the veterinary costs have gone up. So we have another option of training people to catch them in the live traps and then taking them over to a place in Vermont, which still gives a very reasonable dollar amount having your cats spayed or neutered. The price also changes if we're catching a lot of female cats versus a lot of male cats. Now, cats are cheaper, kind of like real life, I guess. So anyway, we'll have the information to review, and we can put that under New Business for next month's meeting. And park, school, apparel, I think that's all I have.
Are there any questions about Amy's report?
Another recommendation that came out of our meeting with Janet was contacting Mr. Fleming to see if he'd be willing to help us in any way, because school staying is a public entity, will enhance the value of this proposal.
Thank you, I agree.
Amy, the Feral Society, do they ever try to find homes for any of those cats?
Yes, if they're under a certain age, they don't even bring them back. Kittens they don't even bring back, they're all adopted out. In the, they started in 98, and in that, my years, they've already fixed 1,000 cats, and of those 1,000 cats, 500 have been adopted. So that is their goal, and when they do, if we decide to go with them and they come up and cat, catch, come up to catch or trap, we do need to let the community know so that those of us with cats that wander around and are fixed and spayed and have all their shots, you don't want them captured and have it done again, so.
Thank you, thank you, Trustee Gary. Now, the report from the clerk treasurer.
Everybody has been covered with the expense and revenue report for April.
So at this time, we present the warrant for payment.
I have to add two bills to the warrant. One is for Finney's, $192.50 for t-shirts for the men, and the other is for St. Mary's, $30 for two hanging flower pots.
At this time, we entertain a motion to accept the warrant.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Now, we'll proceed to vote. Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Okay, we're going to purchase requisitions. We have a purchase requisition for steel-coated boots for four men, a total cost of $548. We entertain a motion to pay this warrant, or this purchase requisition?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Now, we proceed to vote. Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. The next purchase order we have is COD vials for solids testing, a cost of $192.50. Entertain a motion to pay that purchase order?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not? Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Next purchase order we have is skimmer net and pole. I assume that's down the sewer plant?
Yes, that's where the condiment shop is down the water.
A target amount of $99.87. Entertain a motion to pay this, this purchase order?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Now, Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. All right, the next one we have is a square D magnetic switch at $240. That was for a pump on the water system?
No. No lift station, sewer lift station.
All right, now entertain a motion to pay this purchase rec?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Now, Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Okay, the next item up here is a trackless room for the, or trackless machine? Whoa, I don't, I don't see that one, Woody, is that...
The total price is $5,200 with freight. The total price is fifty-two hundred with freight.
Okay, we received the bill, but we don't have.
Okay, we'll just.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, at this time, would entertain a motion to pay this purchase rec? An emotion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, now we have discussion?
Okay, we received the bill, but we will not have goods till the end of the month. So this bill will not get paid till next, our next year. What we're going to do is encumber fifty-two hundred out of this year's budget to pay it in June. So it'll actually come out of this year's budget, not next year's budget. Because there is money in the point four account for street.
Okay, and one question I had, does this affect our paving in any way?
No. Actually, it will help get the streets cleaned up so we can boost the patching and paving.
Any further discussion?
Point four, fifty-one ten point four, street.
And this also won't affect next year's budget?
No.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Now, proceed to vote. Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Okay, the other item that we had here for a purchase rec is a finish mower. Would entertain a motion to pay that purchase rec? A second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Explain what this is for?
It's a rear-mounted three-point hitch mower to put on the back of a Ford tractor. We currently have a belly mower on it and a regular garden tractor mower. And we're going to be using that mower at the wastewater plant. It just gets gears on its last legs.
Do you use a mower at the wastewater plant?
We use the tractor at the wastewater plant.
Okay.
But that hanging underneath and the rough grounded stuff that we have down there, we're going to be banging that thing all off. We have to take it off and put it on. Means you have to crawl underneath the machine. This other one, you just mount on the back and it'll be able to mow more and more likely quicker.
Now, what about the John Deere? We can't use that down there to do this?
The John Deere tractor?
Yeah.
That tractor's really technically instinctive drive.
Just one question. What exactly is a finish mower? Is that something that you tow behind the tractor?
Yes, it's behind the tractor. It's six feet.
Like game mowers or is it?
No, it's six feet rotary mowers. They're very similar to the deck that goes underneath, but it's in the back of the tractor where you could back into underneath things, you know, beat the tractor up.
It runs off the PTO?
Runs off the PTO of the machine. There's no belts. Direct drive.
So I guess my next question would be where would that, where'd it go from?
The eight fifty-one ten point four. There is money in there to cover the streets.
Can't we use that street's money to do more sidewalks and paving and that kind of stuff? Are we limited to what we can use that?
What's going to happen is after the end of this month, whatever is left as a hole, it's going to be a fund balance.
Okay. In general fund?
In general fund, yes.
So I have to offer up my opinion here. I think this is a waste. I really don't think we need it. If we're looking at buying a loader somewhere down the road, then this will be a null and void issue. If we have a loader, you don't need to take the mower deck off that little tractor. You can use that to mow.
You're talking about the small tractor you're using to mow as a lawnmower?
Yeah.
But we use that machine buckets and forks quite a bit around the village.
Right, what I'm saying is your ultimate goal is to get a loader, period.
Yes.
If we had a loader, you wouldn't have to use this tractor to load down at the sewer plant. You can use that.
I would still have to use it because the loader would be used more on the streets than it would be at the wastewater plant. Especially in the winter months.
I don't agree. The back hole right now, it's sitting in there. It's not doing anything. The only time you use the back hole is when you're out, when you've got an emergency or when you're picking up sand or something. I just think we've got too many, too many duplications of the same thing here. Nothing against you, Woody, it's just my opinion.
The purchase of the finish mower would be beneficial for the equipment place. With that deck hanging off the bottom of the tractor, it's not going to get taken off all the time, the way it is now.
My understanding is it takes forty-five minutes to take that.
On and off.
Right.
Approximately.
So.
Twenty minutes, one, twenty minutes.
I'm a little unclear on this, although I haven't had time to consider this. I don't know, but is everybody willing to cave in this for next meeting? I mean, I don't know how concrete. I really. I don't know about this. Is that clear to everyone? Would you like to set a motion to favor this for next meeting? So moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Now, the report, Superintendent?
Everybody's been copied with my work reports for the month. Rather busy dealing with various issues with construction season opening up. Anything from water to sewer to trees and such like that. The pickup days have been going well, but I'm finding that people are cleaning their whole yards out. It was designed to pick up winter debris and leaves, but they're taking off like their whole hedges in their backyard. Which coming down trees and leaving us the branches, but not the wood. It's putting wear and tear on the guys pretty much, but it's been working. We crack sealed Oak Street and three quarters of Church Street. We ran out of material. Church Street was in worse shape than anticipated. We used three hundred and seventy-five liters of crack seal. We did not do Butter Nut or Prospect Street. If we want to complete these, the cost is approximately four thousand dollars. We've been upgrading this individual safety equipment. Been working with Horizon Heights on development. I had some meetings with, I had a meeting with a representative from Duck Ferris, but we never hooked up today. Hot patching will be taking place in the next week or so, weather permitting. As Trustee Garrett said, the River Street project is continuing. A lot of the copper and brass prices for our water system have risen a hundred percent in the last six months. And this came from two vendors. They faxed me or emailed me. So that's going to be, it's going to skew our plans a little bit for the repairs, but we can cut it back to keep it within budget. Asphalt prices will be due in tomorrow morning, as I said earlier. And I'd like to get together with the equipment, people involved with the equipment, so we can discuss the upgrades over the next month before the next meeting. We're really, we need to come up with a plan over the next few years.
Okay, any questions for Superintendent Dissel?
I have one. You're saying it's another four thousand to finish the crack sealing. We have quite a bit of money still in the roads account. Is it beneficial to look at finish sealing these? Or are we better off fixing some of the major potholes? If we don't seal these cracks, are we setting ourselves up for some of the disasters we have around town?
We're setting ourselves up for greater disaster in the future.
So should we act on?
Well, I'm going to bring that up.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, it was just a question.
Does the boat launch got plans for a dock? Was three or four or five cars down there over the weekend? And I was wondering if we had, if there was any appropriations for a section of dock so that once you get your boat in, you've got a place to tie your boat off while you go park your truck?
I didn't see anything, but we can.
We can't go into the water.
But we can probably put something so they can tie their boats off.
On the shore.
On the shore.
Yes, we can't put anything into.
Well, the under sewer, sewer April nineteenth, they're plugged sewer line in the car wash. They need to have a grip fit in an oil water separate vessel. Is that, that's the car wash owner's responsibility, isn't it?
That's correct.
And they've been approached on this need?
I approached this through a letter, through the town. Have to go through the steps because it is a town district.
They're traveling all this stuff down into our wastewater?
That's correct, but I still have to follow the procedures through the town and the contract with the town.
Any further questions for the Superintendent? Now, thanks for your report, Woody. Wantita will now read the correspondence.
Correspondence from Clinton County Health Department regarding the boil water order at the Riverdale Trailer Park. Correspondence from Mr. Big Ballack requesting a credit on his water and sewer bill. Letter to Mr. Joe Russo regarding the water pressure at the Shopping Center complex. Letter from Mr. Keeble thanking everyone for their help while he was village attorney. Correspondence from Harris Beach regarding Horizon Heights development on Prospect Street. Correspondence from Robert and Maureen McCray regarding the water and sewer connection for Living Water Baptist Church. Statement from Dr. John Southwick verifying the union card. Correspondence from Mr. Keeble regarding local law number two of two thousand and six to amend the village code to dissolve the village police department. Correspondence from Terry Lindtort regarding vacation and optional holiday time. Correspondence from Eleanor Phileo resigning as election inspector. Correspondence from the Clinton County Health Department lifting the boil water order at Riverdale Trailer Park. And correspondence from Woody Kessel regarding vacation and optional holiday time.
Okay, now proceed to old business. GSA meters manholes. We haven't gotten anywhere with that. I'm going to begin a letter writing campaign to our representatives to try to get a water heater placed up there. We really need to have a heater. They need to install one of those. There's construction going on up there. Our tank mysteriously was drained this past week. We need to really find out where this, we have a large amount of water that's on build that we're producing. We need to find out where that's going and that's to be our first step, that is the large user. So that's what I plan on doing next, is starting to send off letters to our representatives. The GSA hasn't responded. Time Warner Cable franchise still being looked at. Decision to easement or deed survey to Oracle Palmer Property, I believe we have, which we didn't get a chance to review, but we have a, a letter from David Marshall explaining what he feels we should do. We should probably act on that next meeting so everybody will have a chance. Has everybody had a chance to read that? Yeah? Okay. So do we want to take this off of here now that, I guess? There's really no action to be taken as far as, is that what we're looking at here? So I guess we'll just take that off of old business for next meeting. Very good. The other old business would be completion of crack sealing. At this time, would entertain a motion to expend four thousand dollars from this year's budget to finish the crack sealing? So moved. A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. On their new business, we have some water and sewer adjustments that need to be made this month. These are people that were billing errors because they had no reading on their meter. They were estimated for water and sewer, or sewer usage. They are as follows. Clifford Demers, thirty dollars and eighty-five cents. Teresa Ben, twenty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. And Robert Bechar, twenty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. I would entertain a motion to refund this money as they were not here. They didn't use any water. So moved. A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Now, Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
And Mayor Moore, aye. At this time, would entertain a motion to recognize Teamsters Local Six Eighty-Seven as the bargaining agent for the employees. As was noted in the correspondence, they had a majority sign cards.
So moved.
Second? Is there any discussion? Okay, if not, could you read the acceptance letter?
Dear Mr. Smith, the Village of Champlain determines that Teamsters Local Six Eighty-Seven representing a majority of the employees and following defined bargaining unit and hereby recognize Teamsters Local Six Eighty-Seven as the negotiating agent for all only full-time employees of the Department of Public Works who are in the job title of motor equipment operator. Excluded are all other employees of the department, all part-time probationary seasonal and other employees, as well as those employees in the job title listed above who may, termed on their duties, be determined by the Public Employment Relations Board, being managerial or confidential employees under the Taylor Law. Job titles used above are for descriptive purposes only. The use is either an indication nor guarantee that these titles will continue to be utilized by the Village of Champlain. This notice of recognition will be posted in a conspicuous workplace location for at least five working days, will be advertised for at least one day in the press republic. The Village of Champlain will notify any other employer organizations which had in writing within the previous year claimed to represent any employees in the newly established bargaining unit. This information will include, one, the name of the union recognized, two, the job title of the newly organized unit, three, the date of recognition. Please feel free to contact the village office with any questions.
Okay, is everyone read that acceptance? That's right out of my comment. Okay, there being no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Okay, Wantita will have to send him a letter saying that we've done that. Okay, under our new business also, we have the police department, the local law to dissolve the police department. Apparently, police department's never been dissolved after all these years, but we haven't had one. So Wantita, if you could read the local law?
It is the decision of the village board of trustees to amend the village code and as it is deemed to be in the best interest of the residents of the Village of Champlain, that the village police department be dissolved and that the chapter A one twenty-six, Police Department Rules and Regulations, chapter one twenty-six through section A one twenty-six point two-three inclusive, is hereby revoked and dissolved in its entirety pursuant to village police department hereby dissolved in its entirety. Section two, chapter A one twenty-six is hereby revoked in its entirety. Section three, the village code is amended to delete therefore and refer to the village police department based upon the dissolution of the state, of the said police department. This local law number two is two thousand and six is subject to a permissive referendum.
Okay, someone like to make the motion to approve this local law?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, proceed to vote. Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. This will, I believe that we have to wait thirty days to see if there's anyone requests for a permissive referendum. If not, it becomes the local law?
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay. Very good. At this time, I would like to commend Wantita Manos for attending Introduction to Governmental Accounting. It's a very important step in her treasurer clerk duties and congratulations, Wantita, on completing this training. Congratulations. In line with this, I have a request. Uh, in line with this, uh, I have a request from Donna Barcom to attend a Excel training class, actually it's a two-day session. Is that correct, Donna?
Yes.
Uh, it would be a cost of a hundred and twenty-eight dollars in classes and seventy dollars in mileage, is that for both days?
Uh, I think so, yeah, I think that's what I figured it hit.
Well, in keeping with our interest in keeping people trained, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion that we send Donna to this class, I believe it's in Burlington?
Yep. She made a motion, she sent the class.
And the dates? Are June fifteenth and sixteenth? Okay, um, can, trustee Chombley made the motion, and is your second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I think that's a great idea, it'll help us a lot in the budget process to have a good, I expect.
Okay, uh, trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Uh, trustee Martin?
Aye.
Uh, trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Okay, uh, one other thing that we need to clear up, uh, we need to, uh, have one more meeting to close out the fiscal year. I know. This'll just be a short meeting, it won't be a long meeting, but we have to, I believe we'll have to transfer some forms and, uh, this will know exactly what those numbers are at the end of the month. Uh, I was looking at the last week of the month, uh, which, I think the Labor Day is the twenty-sixth.
Labor Day, or?
Or.
Or Monday, excuse me.
Yes.
I don't remember who's the summer, sort of summer, oh, I. Not at all. Uh, so thirtieth or thirty-first be good with everyone, or?
Yes, I'm done with the bizarre, that's great, Tuesday, fourth, ninth, tenth.
Anybody have any preference for Tuesday, or, yeah, Tuesday or Thursday in that week?
Tuesday or Wednesday.
Or Wednesday. Wednesday, Thursday and Thursday.
Yep.
Yeah.
Correct.
It's better, Wednesday's fine with me. Thursday's fine with me.
Yeah, what do you think that?
How about Tuesday?
Tuesday's fine with me.
I don't know.
There's something here we don't know about.
God's.
Wednesday. Is it Tuesday?
Tuesday at? Regular time?
At six-thirty, okay. Uh, could we put it, have a notice put in the paper for that, or wrap up our fiscal year at that time?
May twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth.
Thirtieth, the end period?
May thirtieth.
That'll be a special meeting.
Great. I had, I'm gonna make a motion, I had, uh, a personnel issue that I'd like to discuss briefly and then we can come back into regular session.
I'm sorry, Mr. Valek, water sewer request. I apologize, I forgot that was on the agenda and I didn't have any paperwork for you. So he's already paid the bill. I don't know if you wanna wait till the next meeting, I'll have paperwork for you. Because the billing comes out the first.
We need to know the amount, I think I've got some correspondence on that, I don't think we had numbers.
He wrote a letter, it was under number two on the correspondence.
Well, normally his bill is in the hundred dollar range and this time it was four eighty-eight seven three.
Okay, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll have to have some numbers to act on that, so. If he calls, you can tell him that we're gonna act on it.
Yeah, he's already paid the bill, so we would have a credit on his next bill.
Thank you.
And the correspondence nine and twelve, is that, you need to, I think I've done.
Uh, we're gonna come back in session and, um, deal with that when we come back. We will be about a couple minutes. Uh, entertain a motion to go into executive section. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it?
Just like, we'll be back.
Turn the air conditioner off. We're conserving energy.
Woody, could you stop that tape, please? Just hit the button in the front, thank you, the red button.